Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
All right, welcome to the regular session of the Town Council, Fountain Hills.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for Mr. Roger Oars from Fountain, for Four Peaks Community Church, share invocation with us. Come on up to the microphones, we can all hear you. Welcome.
Mayor, council, thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful country that you've given us, this town that you've given us, in which we're able to freely worship, freely belong, freely organize, freely participate. We just pray that you would protect this council, protect their decision-making tonight, guide us, guide them as they wrestle with the decisions that are before this council, give them wisdom in administering them, and in handling them, and in wisely deciding them. Pray that you would protect them, and protect this town as we go through this evening, and as we continue forward as a town and as a community. We give you the glory, Father. We pray and thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Oars.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlumpf?
Here.
Councilmember Cantino?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Councilmember LaChee?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Elke?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Great. Welcome, everyone. Couple things to note. The November 8th election is coming up, and there is a ballot box at Town Hall on the second floor for those voters who may wish to return their voted ballots in person rather than by mail. And then those will be brought down to America County Elections. Town Hall again is open 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and that includes November 8th Election Day to assist voters. So make sure you get out there and vote. And also want to note that Friday night, tomorrow night, is first Fountain Hills High School football playoff game, but it is out in Buckeye, and it's supposed to be cold and rainy. So, go Falcons, if you can get out there. Bring an umbrella, and be loud. Get to start out today's meeting with some recognition that's duly earned for one of our commission members that's leaving. And I'll share a couple things about Mr. Richard Schultz, who's here, and his family's here, so it's great to see you guys. Tonight, we're going to recognize Richard Schultz, who was appointed to the very first Strategic Planning Advisory Commission by the Town Council immediately following adoption of its first strategic plan in December of 2005. As a charter member of SPAC, Rich was actively involved for over five and a half years in all SPAC projects and initiatives, including development and adoption of the strategic plan for 2010. His dedication to SPAC and to the town of Fountain Hills has been evidenced by his many hours of volunteer service, and is sincerely appreciated by the council, his fellow commissioners, and to all town residents. And I know the chair would have been here if she could be here, too, and she just is so grateful for Rich's time on the SPAC as well, and certainly brought a great perspective while he's on there, and I know he'll stay involved. So, Rich, I've got a nice plaque for you. If you come on up, I'll present you. And we'll get a picture, too, Rich. It says, "Presented to Rich Schultz in appreciation for service to the town of Fountain Hills as a commissioner on the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, February 2006 to August 22, 2011." I think your name's spelled right there, huh? Let me get my camera. Mr. I don't see Mr. Burns here. And family, come on up. Get a better picture up close, and then I'll, we'll get one with my camera as well. And who's got the surest hands on staff? Brian? Take a picture. And you just push. We'll go on with Rich and I first. All right, let's look over here at the panel, so you can take some of the pictures. All right, good. Thanks, Rich. All right, move on to call to the public. I think we have a speaker card.
Yes, Mayor Lena Belliner.
Welcome, Ms. Belliner.
Thank you, Mayor. Council? As a Fountain Hills resident, I was disturbed and embarrassed after reading an email sent by Town Councilwoman Ginny Dickey to a resident. The email contained her thoughts about a meeting held in the community center and sponsored by the Governor's Council on Aging. In the email, she engaged in partisan attacks against four state legislators who were invited to address our senior citizens, and even implied that one of them was nauseating. And the email sent in response to someone's question about the road bond is now spreading rapidly around town. It reads as follows, and I quote, "In a message dated 10/19/2011 9:57, Ginny Dickey at Cox.net writes, quote, 'Yes, we sure need this. The roads are beyond patching, 30 years old in places, and not good for attracting visitors and businesses. It is starting to really be noticeable, so please, yes, the Tea Party meanies are out in force against it. So what we thought was reasonable and would pass is now in real jeopardy. Horrible meeting today. Supposed to be Senior Day, an event by the Governor's Council on Aging they do every year in other communities. Since C.T. Wright is a member of the council, he hosted it. I thought it might be a little rough, with seniors angry that we had to cut their transit and are charging more for meals on wheels. However, it was John Kavanaugh, Michelle Eugenty, David Burnell Smith, gag, and Nancy Bardo. Campaign rally, dump on the Affordable Healthcare Act. I managed to say a few things, but it was a despicable show. C.T. Wright even tried to bring them back, to the topic, but they wouldn't listen. Thanks for asking about this, because I should tell people we know to vote yes if they are wondering.'" End of quote. Senator Bardo and Representatives Eugenty, David Smith, and our own John Kavanaugh were invited to address the seniors on issues of importance to them. Councilwoman Dickey did not like the way seniors expressed concerns over Obamacare and other federal measures, nor did she like the way the representatives agreed that the seniors' concerns were serious and justified. Ms. Dickey is a big supporter, obviously, of Obamacare, and stood up at this meeting and defended it. In the email, she accused the four legislators of turning the meeting into a campaign rally for them, even though all questions came from the seniors who controlled the meeting. As one that publicly claims to want a civil discourse while using the term "gag" in describing Representative Smith implying that he is nauseating, and while mischaracterizing a meeting as the height of hypocrisy, how juvenile and mean-spirited. Ms. Dickey, shame on you.
Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
All right, thanks. All right, we've got six items on our consent agenda to move on to. I'll go through them briefly, and we'll look for a motion in a second on those. First item is consideration approved of the Town Council meeting minutes from October 20th. Item two, consideration of amendment with Barbagallo Electric, an amount of $8,316 for installation of fire station equipment, emergency generators. Item three, consideration of a special event application for Turkey Truck 5K and Fitness Walk on November 24th in downtown Fountain Hills. Item four is consideration of special event application for Thanksgiving Day Parade in downtown Fountain Hills. Item five, consideration of special event application for Stroll and the Glow to be held on December 3rd, 2011, on the Avenue. Item number six, consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by Carlos Enrico Alvarez, representing the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 7507, for an event to be held at Swoole Boulevard near the Fountains on November 11th and 12th, 2011. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
No.
Roll call, please. Second. Oh, a second. Thanks. Councilmember Elke.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember LaChee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor 70?
All right, thank you. Now move on to the regular agenda. Item seven, consideration of appointing one applicant to serve as a planning zoning commission from Thursday, November 3rd, that's right away, until September 30th, 2012. I move to appoint Jean Schlechter. Could I get a second?
Right.
Any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Hanson.
I was just curious who we lost off the commission. It just says a member. I was just wondering.
Oh. Dick Holper did resign.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for that reminder. And we've got a first and a second, correct? Can I get a second? All right, now we have a second. Any discussion on this appointment to the P&amp;Z? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 70?
Mr. Schlechter.
Aye.
Welcome. Welcome back, and thanks for serving us. Appreciate it. Item eight, consideration of Resolution 2011-13, approving intergovernmental agreement with City of Scottsdale related design and construction of a sidewalk and multi-use path along the south side of Shea Boulevard, obviously down the hill from Fry's. Right, Randy?
Yes, sir.
All right, welcome. How are you?
Thank you, sir. This project will construct a multi-use path, multi-use path and a meandering sidewalk along the south side of Shea Boulevard. It'll go from 142nd Street in Scottsdale to Eagle Mountain Parkway. Design costs and the construction local matching funds will be funded 70% by Fountain Hills, 30% by Scottsdale. That's based on the length of the pedestrian way in the two communities. It's shown in our current CIP, and when completed, this will be the first pedestrian connection between Scottsdale and Fountain Hills. And Scottsdale City Council will also be taking this matter up in the near future. And I would mention that we do have a grant for $273,000 on this. It's a federal aid CM AQ grant, and can pay up to 70 to 80% of the costs, and the local matching funds will be split by Scottsdale and Fountain Hills. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this that you might have.
All right, thanks, Randy. Could we get a motion on this item? Could we get a motion to per the IGA with City of Scottsdale for the Shea Boulevard sidewalk project?
Hello.
How about a second? Second? All right. Are there any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
All right, and questions for Randy? Staff? Councilmember LaChee?
Randy, thank you for the staff report and the presentation, and I'm all for IGAs with the City of Scottsdale and enhancing our connectivity. In a different economic climate, I don't think I would question this. Looking at your numbers, we're looking at the town of Fountain Hills, it will cost us $35,000 in FY 1112, $35,000 in 1213. That's $70,000. And then in construction, we would be paying $65,000. So that's a total of $135,000. We would be then paying $135,000, $135,000 for a $273,000 grant, less what Scottsdale would benefit from that. In terms of looking at our own benefit, it's more like we're spending $135,000 for a value of a grant worth anywhere between $190,000 and $200,000. So with that being said, I think it's a high price to pay for a project that I don't see as a priority. I mean, connectivity between that area of Scottsdale and Eagle Mountain is just not at the top of my list for priorities. I would rather see us spend $135,000 on sidewalk projects in town, creating connectivity and buying more into our SWABAC plans. So, I applaud you for the work, I applaud you for your report, and I've never been one to shy away from grant monies, but in this circumstance, I, it's questionable whether this amount of money should be spent on this project in this particular location at this particular point in time. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember LaChee. Randy, are the numbers that Councilmember LaChee, that he worked up, fairly accurate as far as you can tell what's going to be the end result?
Mayor, those are the numbers that we have in our budget. Certainly, as we get into the design, we'll need to see whether those, we actually have that much. You know, construction costs have come down substantially. These were the costs we budgeted a number of years ago when we actually had applied for the grant for this. If the costs are actually substantially less, we could actually look at doing, well, there's two things. Number one, although MAG requires us to submit this as a 70% grant, we actually can build it as an 80% grant if the costs are there. The federal funding is fixed, although there are possibilities, and you may recall that we have in the past gotten additional federal funding where we were well below the, well above the local required minimum matching funds. What, two, three years ago, when we did the Shea Climbing Lane, we applied for and received the extra million, $1.1 million, to bring us up to the full federal aid funding possible on that. So there's those possibilities. There's a possibility that the cost may not be as high, and I guess I'd say, you know, I would agree with you that there, you know, the prioritization is a question, although I guess I would say in this case, this is our opportunity to connect from a sidewalk multi-use path that goes a long way in Scottsdale to a sidewalk on Shea Boulevard that goes a long way on Shea Boulevard, bringing, you know, it provides the missing link, if you will, along Shea Boulevard.
Randy, what's your, based on our most recent experience with cost for our portion, do you have a more rounded number that would be closer of reality? I know it's not a, it's not a long sidewalk.
Yes, Mayor, you know, and I think we really need to get into the design on this to see where the costs are, but I can't tell you. I mean, you know, when we did the Shea Climbing Lane a year and a half ago, I mean, the costs were half of what we had originally predicted, so, but who knows, who knows when we get ready, you know, a couple of years from now, when we get ready to do, what the costs will be on this.
That's a CM AQ grant?
That's correct, Mayor.
So that's $273,000 for the grant, and we may pay 20% of our portion, which wouldn't be all 273. What portion of the federal grant would we likely gain versus what Scottsdale would get as far as a percentage?
Mayor, the IGA sets that the local match will be paid 70% by Fountain Hills, 30% by Scottsdale, based on the length in the two communities.
So if it ends up just to pick around number $200,000 project?
If the project was $200,000, and 80% of that would be 160, so that would be 40,000 between the two communities, we'd pay 70% of that, which would be 28,000, so.
Total?
Yeah.
But there is 135 budgeted through the CIP, and those are the numbers that Councilmember LaChee was alluding to, right?
Absolutely, sir.
All right, so until we get the bid, we're really not certain. Do we have discretion once the bids arrived at? Will it come back to us?
Absolutely, Mayor. Coming back to council, we will be coming back to council with a engineering proposal for the design, and then we will be coming back to the council prior to sending our money, our local match to ADOT. And then ADOT will bid it, they will actually award it, but they will require us to pay a local match based on the final cost estimate once the plans are done.
A CM AQ grant for design and construction?
It can be for design and construction. The design adds a number of different issues, and we'll need to meet with Scottsdale to determine whether we think there's enough funding available so that we want to use it for design as well as construction.
So roughly, if, I mean hypothetically comes in at 200,000, 28,000 would be our cost. Okay.
That's correct, Mayor.
Thanks. Councilmember Hanson?
I'm tending to agree with Henry, and there's one thing, the segment of the sidewalk in Scottsdale is a multi-use path, which means bikes can go on it as well, which is a good thing from a safety standpoint. But because of the limitations on Shea, the report says that the Fountain Hills segment will be shifting the bike traffic back out into the bike lane. So I'm not seeing the benefit of the safety issue there. So I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards the prioritization thing and having sidewalks where people are really walking, and I don't really see them walking on Shea very often.
Any other comments, Councilmember Brown? Thank you, Mayor. Randy, do we have to do this in 1112? Can we, can we push it off another year, or do we lose the grant?
Mayor, Councilmember, yes, we've actually, we're actually going to have to apply for an extension at the current time. So, yeah, I would not recommend deferring it another year, although it may be possible, but it gets dicey.
And Councilmember Cantino?
Thanks, Mayor. Randy, on going up there, looks like we got the most of the construction on that sidewalk because we got the worst grade and everything else going all the way up. In the times that I've been on that road, which is like every day, I sit back and I've only seen one person walk on that sidewalk, and that was a lady last week. And other than that, I've never seen anybody, and this was on the Scottsdale side coming up, I've never seen anybody else walk on there. So I guess I'm wondering, at this time, do we really need something like this?
Mayor, Councilman Cantino, I, you know, I drive it every day, and I rarely see anybody walk there either. I wouldn't walk there. It's a hazard to walk there today.
Right.
And that's the purpose of the sidewalk and the multi-use path, to eliminate the hazard and to allow people to walk there. How many will walk there after construction of this, you know, is difficult to say, but I can tell you today, nobody walks there.
Well, I think it has a good point of the other side of the hill. When we put the sidewalk going down, nobody walks there. And we got a sidewalk sitting there empty. So I think, case in point, we just made it.
Is there another comment? Councilmember LaChee?
Thank you, Mayor. And Randy, once again, I think it's a, it's a creative project, and as I said, I would love to see that connectivity at some point in time. I don't think now is the time, just because of our economic climate. Now, all I can go on is what I have in the report here, and I have $70,000 in engineering. That is some pretty significant excavation and work that's going to need to be done on the Fountain Hill side when you look at that particular terrain. We have, based on your report, $65,000 our share, and we're saying that today, now, the construction costs are down, and I would agree with that. Construction on this project is not scheduled till 1314. It's very possible construction costs may go back up, and these numbers that you projected a few years back may be accurate. But once again, I think it's a creative project. I'd like to see that connectivity. I don't like shying away from grants, but using these numbers that could go down, or they could go up, we just have more significant needs, and $135,000, or even reducing that to $100,000 of our share, we could do a lot with that infilling sidewalks and creating connectivity, and I think more traveled areas. So, that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Are there ramifications to future grants or to any sort of a relationship or agreement that we already had with Scottsdale if we didn't do this at this time?
Well, Mayor, Councilwoman Dickey, there's no actual legal ramification, if you will. The interconnections between the town and Scottsdale and ADOT and MAG certainly would be damaged, to what extent, I can't tell you, but certainly, you know, our partners in this potential project would see this as fairly flaky, I would think.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And would the bid be for the whole project? So would it matter if the prices went up in 1314, or would the bids all be separate?
Mayor, Councilwoman Dickey, the bid would be for the entire project, yeah. ADOT would bid the project as one project and handle it that way.
One more thing, Mayor. And then if we didn't use this money, this is the maximum amount, but if we used, if we don't use it, is it reasonable that there would be, because we talk about other places that we would want sidewalks, but we haven't actually seen a plan for that, so is it reasonable that we would do that? Or are we making a choice for something that we might not actually be able to do anything else with?
Mayor, Councilwoman Dickey, the funds are committed to, through MAG, by us applying for a grant at MAG, they're committed to a specific project. If that project is not undertaken, the funds just simply go away, or they're reallocated to other projects at MAG's discretion. Certainly, we would be able to apply for that. However, I doubt that any pedestrian projects outside of Shea Boulevard would be looked on particularly favorably by MAG. I mean, I think they recognize the regional significance of Shea Boulevard, and then other than perhaps routes to school, I would doubt that we could get a pedestrian project funded.
So, Mayor, thank you, Randy. So we're, there's nothing that we are not doing this year that we talked about during the budgeting that we can't do because of this, but if we don't go ahead with this, we're leaving potentially Scottsdale in a, in a position where they probably can't do the project. We applied for this grant with knowledge that we were applying for this grant. I'm a little bit concerned about it at this time, unless somebody tells me differently, that we didn't, we weren't fully engaged until now, to say no. I'm not sure exactly that I would want to do that.
Councilmember Elke?
Randy, you had mentioned that at present, you'd have to file for an extension of this, of this grant, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
How long would that extension go for if that were granted?
We would apply definitely for a one-year extension, perhaps a two-year extension.
Okay.
The federal aid process is a very long process, and we would need to do that to be able to actually get through the federal aid process.
When is the grant set to expire now, or what's the deadline presently without the extension?
It's 2012, I believe.
2012. So the extension you would be applying for would be through 2014 at present?
Mayor, Councilman, that's correct.
Is there, is there anything that would prevent or preclude you from filing for an extension of this, for this project to perhaps be looked at next year?
Mayor, Councilman Elke, we can certainly do that. How it would be looked upon if we haven't started and don't have any commitment to proceed with it in the future is certainly questionable, I would think, on MAG's part.
Okay. When, if I may, Mayor, when would you, or how would you know if we are granted an extension of this? of this?
Mayor, Councilman Elke, we would apply for an extension relatively quickly, and it will work its way through the MAG committee process. I actually have the extension papers sitting on my desk right now, because it's that time of year, and so we would be doing that. But we've done that on other projects.
Have you done that on other projects where you have not had prior commitment from council of funding for it?
Yes, we did. We did once, yes.
And what was the outcome of that?
I mean, they, that was the first extension, which is basically an automatic extension, and so they didn't even look at it, so.
And what, I'm sorry, Mayor, what, have we had an extension of this grant as of yet?
Mayor, Councilman, no, we have not.
This would, so this would be our first request for an extension as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Mayor, I think, to avoid sending the wrong message perhaps to Scottsdale, maybe this is something we look at next year, and I certainly don't want to damage our relationship with Scottsdale or certainly with MAG. With that in mind, I would withdraw my second at this time.
Okay, so now what do we do? Parliamentarian, or Andrew? Do we have seconds withdrawn? Do we look for another second?
Yes.
Continue? Okay, good. Do we have a, who had our first? Yeah, I don't know if that, Vice Mayor? All right, do we have a second on this item?
Mayor, could we, procedurally, would a motion to table this be appropriate?
Is it? So would it be an amendment, or would it be a superseding motion?
Superceding. Mayor, motion to table this for further consideration and additional information, if you could, Randy from the City of Scottsdale, MAG to Honian, as far as the numbers are concerned.
Second? From what I'm hearing, that's probably what we should be doing. Any other discussion on the motion to table, or do we just vote on that, or, all right, look, all in favor to table this item, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
All right, thanks, Randy. All right. Item number nine and 10 will be on one report. Item nine's consideration of Resolution 2011-14, declaring a public record that certain document filed with the town clerk and entitled the amendment to the Fountain Hills Town Code, Chapter Eight, Special Events. And then, but item 10's consideration of ordinance 11-13, amending the Fountain Hills Town Code, Chapter Eight, Special Events. Hey, Brian, how are you?
Good. Good evening, Mayor, Council. At the October 11th work study, staff presented recommendations through the town council to help streamline the special event process. Among those recommendations were a formal creation of a special event committee to review the event applications for compliance with the town code and policies and procedures. The special event committee would then make a recommendation to the town manager for approval or denial of the event, which could be done administratively without having to bring each application to the town council for consideration. Revised process also allows for denied applicant to appeal their event to the town council, which was a question we had at the work study. Along with those recommendations was just removal of some texts from the special events section of the town code that were no longer relevant or accurate, particularly major and minor event designations, number of days between events, and who to submit the application to, and some others. Staff has also streamlined the application, which is more checkboxes as opposed to open and questions, which allows for smaller events to submit less information, but the necessary information in larger events will likely need to submit additional pages. Reduced fees for special events were adopted by the town council as part of the overall fee schedule adopted in August, and staff will continue to review the fees annually and make recommendations throughout the budget process. So in summary, based on what we talked about at the work study and previous meetings, the proposed changes will help streamline the special event process for the applicant, staff, and town council, and ultimately encourages more special events here in town. So with that, staff recommends approval of the resolution and the ordinance approving those changes.
Thanks, Brian. Do we have anyone from the public on item nine or 10?
No, Mayor.
All right. Council, look for a motion on item nine?
Move to approve.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on item nine, consideration of the resolution? Councilmember Elke?
Brian, thank you for doing this, and I know a lot of the groups in nonprofitous towns certainly appreciate it. Just out of curiosity, section three that deals with anyone that's found guilty of violating the provision of the special event regulations, it's a class one misdemeanor?
Mm-hmm.
Has that been modified from the previous, and perhaps should be directed to Andrew, has that been modified from the previous code, or is that the same?
Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elke, that's still the same because that's the default provision. We'll be bringing forward to you fairly soon an amendment to that section of the code to try and give the same civil penalties we've been talking about in other provisions as a general provision, and we'll hit some of these at the same time.
Yeah, that would be, that's pretty harsh, I mean, that's the highest class of misdemeanor that you can have for perhaps not filling out your application correctly, so.
And if you spit on the sidewalk, you could get two of them.
Mayor? All right, Councilmember Cantino?
Yes, Andrew, how soon are we going to be able to look at that? I know you and I have been talking about other things on this, and I want to get this thing moving.
We can have something to you, probably, I want to get it out to the prosecutor and have him take a look at it first, to make sure that he's comfortable enforcing what we're going to provide, but, you know, within the next month or so, we should have it on the council's agenda.
Okay, thank you.
We'll make it a New Year's resolution and make sure that's in place.
Good.
Councilmember Hanson?
For the folks at home who remember the former application packet, which was almost a half inch thick, this is what they've come up with now, nice and sleek and easy. Thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Any other comments on this? Item nine, at least, the resolution portion, have a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye? Aye? Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Item 10, consideration of the ordinance, 11-13, amending the code in Chapter Eight, Special Events, so you have a motion?
I'll move.
All right, a second. Any comments on the ordinance? And just, Brian, thanks a bunch. I know it's been a process, I know you've been fitting it in between helping people with events and a number of other things, and thanks for getting all the feedback from the folks that regularly do special events, and guiding us through the fee process so we can help lower the fees and also make it easier for smaller gatherings to get together without feeling intimidated by a packet such as that, so, that is tremendous. Good job. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye? Aye? Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
All right, thanks a bunch, Brian.
Thank you.
Item 11, council discussion direction to interim town manager, finance director, Giddy. Nothing there? And how about item 12, summary of council requests and recent activities?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This week, the Public Safety Advisory Commission met, and they've started planning for the 2012 Public Safety Day, which will be on Saturday, February 11th, at Fountain Park, and that's a good opportunity for the citizens to see their public safety department and their equipment and their staff. Also, next week, the National League of Cities, Congress of Cities, will be held in Phoenix. This is where municipal leaders from across the country will be attending this conference, and this conference includes mobile workshops where attendees have signed up for the opportunity to learn about two of our community beautification partnerships, the Art Docent Program and the Greening of the Downtown Initiative. Guests will be greeted by the mayor and provided with a goodie bag, including art walk flyer, greening trifold brochure, community center corkscrews, et cetera, and a presentation by Jerry Miles, Sandy Thompson, and Jenny Willigrod at the community center. The presentations will be followed by a guided walking tour of the public art collection and the greening of the downtown project. And just a reminder that next Wednesday is our third monthly Citizen Town Hall, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, for residents to come in and talk to any of the staff members and ask any questions they like. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Obviously, the big fairs coming up this coming weekend, or next weekend, next weekend. And of course, Veterans Day celebrations that are going to be very exciting, and from 9:00 AM, there's the service at the Veterans Memorial, and 2:00 into the Fountain Park, right, Councilmember Ruggie?
Yeah, at 2:00, there will be a Veterans Appreciation Day event at the Performance Pad, and we have a scheduled flyover for that event, and we'll be turning the fountain red, actually.
And what time will that be?
It begins at 2:00.
Okay.
And then, of course, the normally scheduled Veterans Memorial service, as you pointed out, will be at 9:00 in the morning at the Veterans Memorial.
And red shirts are welcome.
Absolutely. They're actually mandatory.
Mandatory. Councilmember Dickey? And Vice Mayor?
The National League of Cities that Julie was just mentioning, I'm going to attend, the Wednesday, they have a first attendee session, so that one I'll go to. We have an Arizona connection because Marie Lopez Rogers, who's the mayor of Avondale, is the second vice president of the National League, and then the Arizona League is going to have some events and activities on Friday. On Wednesday afternoon, and I'm, kind of coincidentally, I'm going to the Center for After School Excellence Awards luncheon with Sandra Day O'Connor, but the league itself actually has a Your Cities Family event, and that's going to, they're also talking about after-school excellence, and some of those same personnel know each other, so I'm going to attend that. There's going to be four actual concurrent conferences, Economic Development, Green Cities, Infrastructure, and Your Cities Families, and I'm hoping that to mostly go to the Your Cities Family one, but maybe I'll be able to see some of the others, especially the Economic Development one, too. So that's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and then, and it's also on Saturday morning.
And there'll be thousands of people from all over the country in Phoenix, so that was a good conference, and it's typically on the east side of the Mississippi, so it's great to have it coming to Arizona. So if you don't mind, you send us out a little report on what you picked up. Anything else? All right, look for a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? Opposed?